This meeting of the school committee on August 4th at 7:04 PM. Thank you very much and we're happy for those of you that have joined us this evening. We are going to start this meeting as we always do with public comment. I will just let you know about public comment here at the school committee for those that have joined us. We review our public comment policy before each public comment session. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. No citizen may speak more than once without permission of the chair. Just a reminder that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens of the committee, but it is your opportunity to express your opinions on issues of school committee business. Since we're on Zoom tonight, I will ask people who are here for public comment to raise their digital hand to be recognized to speak. Once you raise your digital hand and are recognized to speak, we will elevate you so that the school committee members can both see and hear you. We ask you to turn your cameras on and just state your name and address and tell us a little bit about why you've joined us this evening. I'd also like to acknowledge that via email, the school committee received public comment via email from the O'Brien family, the Call family, the Phillips family, the McLendon and Calabrio family prior to this meeting and that those comments will be entered as part of the record as well. So anybody who is here wishing to speak for public comment, please raise your hand and we'll be happy to recognize you.
Okay, Susan Call, I'm gonna elevate you to panelist. Susan, you are with us. If you could unmute and turn your camera on?
Sorry. Hi, I'm actually Tom Callum, I'm at my wife's account here and I did write to the committee. Thank you for receiving and recognizing that. I live at 12 Manchester Road. I was part of recommending an assortment of mitigation items that were moved up from the field committee to the school board. Mr. Nixon was there at that meeting. I just want to reiterate that what's going on, what's being proposed with the school lights, which is the topic I would speak upon with the Manchester field is essentially a vast expansion of the use of those lights under an exemption for educational purposes. Essentially, the town is maximizing its use of an exemption and the burden of that exemption falls on the abutters in the form of an assortment of nuisances directly in the form of light and beyond that, parking, noise, trash, assortment of nuisances. What's happened in the past is many of these ideas I put forward have been agreed to in principle in various meetings like this, but really haven't been followed through. I think the ultimate expression of good faith to the neighborhood is that some of the mitigation or all of it actually happens before the lights are extended. Pay the price, get the benefit. Up until now, it's all about the benefit with the price and the cost of it being shifted to the neighborhood. In particular, I would encourage you to please get the police involved because as a property owner, as the owner of the school, the school has historically taken the position that they have no responsibility for the knock-on effects of the use of the field. The parking, noise, the rest of it, that's really for the police to handle. But the police never show up at these events and they're not part of any dialogue that I'm aware of. And I would be happy to be part of that dialogue to figure out what the expectations are because I don't know that they know what the expectations are that get put upon them in various meetings. So with that, I would also ask you as individuals to consider that you're going to ask somebody to endure hundreds of hours of illuminated light on their house, their yard, and inside their houses, in some cases for the really near abutters in exchange for the benefit for other people. It's essentially, in my opinion, a tax that's being levied on the neighborhood. So thank you very much for taking my comments. I don't want to go over time and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Mr. Call. We really appreciate that. If you are, we'll put you back in the viewership and if you'd like to stick around a little bit later, you'll be able to hear the school committee's discussion and potentially address some of the things that you brought up. So thanks for joining us. Is there anyone else who is with us today here for a public comment? If you'd just like to raise your digital hand?
I have Mr. Phillips. We're gonna promote you to panelist.
Welcome, Mr. Phillips. As you're coming up, if you'd just, just a reminder to state your name and address and take off mute and have your camera on for us. We'd appreciate it.
You are with us, Mr. Phillips, if you would unmute.
Good evening. I am going to pass my, the comments to my wife at this moment, but I will rejoin and speak as well.
Hi, I'm Rachel Phillips, 10 Manchester Road. And I was wanting to just bring up quickly, it's my understanding that a light proposal was proposed not too long ago for the Mystic School neighborhood for the installation of lights and late night rentals. And I was told that that the neighbors brought up their concerns and those concerns were remedied by not installing lights and agreeing to not have any late night events or rentals or playtime in that area. And I would ask that you would address why our neighborhood has not received that kind of consideration after all these years that we've had our concerns about the lights and what that would cause in our neighborhood. The other thing I wanted to ask about was we went to both field committee meetings a couple of weeks ago and the meetings were held, the two meetings were held six days apart. We asked why this was being rushed so fast in the middle of summer when many of the neighbors were away on vacation and couldn't even go to any of the meetings. There was not proper notice served to the abutters or to the neighbors. So a lot of people didn't even, weren't even aware that these meetings, at least certainly the first one, was even taking place and that this light, expanded light policy was going to occur. We did not receive an answer as to why it was rushed so quickly to get those two meetings in within six days of each other to send it over to school committee. So I'm asking you tonight as a school committee to vote no on the policy that was sent over by the field management committee and to request that the field committee give more time to work with the neighborhood on a lot of the concerns we have and some of the solutions that we propose, some of the mitigation before the school committee actually votes on it so that we can remedy and come up with other solutions that the neighborhood can agree to and make it a better policy. It was done in a very rushed manner and people were not able to participate to the extent that this should be required to have happen with such a large change in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, did you have something to add or shall we move on to the next public comment?
I can either add it now or you can come back to me, whatever is best for you.
We'll take you while you're here. Thank you. Thank you for-
My name is Ian Phillips. I live at 10 Manchester Road. And what I would like to just take a moment to talk about is the history here. This has been an ongoing issue since 1991 when the neighborhood was told that the lights are a fact of life and to just get over it. And since the early 2000s, the neighborhood has raised the same issues as were raised in 1991 and brought them up over and over again. We raised the financing issues, parking issues, garbage and trespass issues, including public urination. We raised public safety issues, including traffic and emergency vehicle access over and over again. We did that in the early 2000s, in 2014, in 2018, and now we're doing it again in 2022. And we're still talking about the same things. And each time more and more burden is being put on this community and each time, none of the conditions are being addressed. They're worse than they were before and the promises of the town are not being met. Financially, as we stated all the way back in 2004, the field and the lights were never and are never going to pay for themselves. That's a fallacy that gets brought up over and over again. Parking is worse. You saw the pictures that I shared last week or two weeks ago. Clearly, parking is unacceptable here. Garbage is worse. We have public smoking and cigarette butts being left on the street in front of our homes. People go onto our driveways and into our backyards to what? To not pay for watching the football game and use our yards as bathrooms. It's unacceptable and it shouldn't be allowed. Let's be clear that public safety is worse and sadly, as we predicted, the issue of emergency vehicles being blocked and not being able to help people in need has occurred. I showed you the pictures. A child was injured on the field and the ambulance could not get to the child and could not get out of the street because of the illegal parking and the behavior of the crowd. These are the responsibility, not necessarily of the school committee or the select board, it's both. It's the town's responsibility and I can't break that out for you. But the community and the neighborhood has the right to request and ask you to take these issues seriously. If not now, when? When we decide to switch the hours to midnight to 2 AM? Because we make the same arguments and nothing is done. So fundamentally, and let me just say, I don't think that the school committee would ever intentionally harm a child. Of course you wouldn't. But the choices that the town has made about the lights were in contrast to written medical opinions that the lights would injure an elderly person in this neighborhood and would also you know, affect children because they can't, they can't go to sleep at night because the lights are on until 10 o'clock. How could that possibly be in the school committee's interest to harm children that way? So what I'm asking is pretty much similar to what my wife asked for. This, I asked that the school committee vote no. I'm not never vote no now. So the, and then please direct the field committee to work with the neighborhood. We're the ones that have brought the solution of half-field lights to them. We are the ones that have brought the solutions about parking and driving and access gates to the field. We can contribute and it would be better for the school committee and all parties and the select board if the field committee and the community could walk down the aisle together and give you a plan that was worthy of approval. I also ask that the school committee, as part of whatever they go forward with, that is part of their direction to the field committee, that they require that the parking ban be implemented as promised to force the field committee to evaluate the half-lights, to act on the recommendations by the rec department and get the community involved. That is within your power to say no now and ask them respectfully to come back to you. They are a committee that makes a recommendation to you. You can ask them to do a better job. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Phillips, I want to move you to attendee. Mr. McLendon, promoting you to panelist.
Hey, good evening, everybody, and thank you for being there. My name is Michael McLendon. I'm at 410 Main Street. And if I focus my screen just slightly differently, you could see out my window and right to the end zone of the football field and some of the light stanchions. I want to thank my neighbors, Tom and Rachel and Ian, for expressing themselves so well. I can tell you they speak for a number of other people who aren't able to be here, who we gather on the sidewalks and at the field and talk about our chagrin over how this has progressed. I think the argument here is, I would like, as they have said, to argue not for no, but now, no, not right now. No, with given more thought and attention to what some of the issues are. We have to remember that the agreement that we're talking about updating was actually a compromise with the neighborhood. It was supposed to accommodate our concerns 13 years ago when the field was put in and then 10 years ago when the lights were upgraded. And at each time, we were told that our interests would be respected. To have this put before us unilaterally as a decision and then must put in the position of being the jerks who are opposing it, I think is totally unfair. We have an investment in the field. We have an investment in Winchester and in the well-being of student athletes and a healthy social and athletic life in the town. I think we would like to see that succeed. But to have it, to have it move forward like this with, where we are sort of at the far end of it with people staring at us like, alright, get over what you have to say and we're going to move on. I think there are a couple of things that are worth noting as we do move on. One is that whatever we've talked about as far as accommodation or dealing with the challenges that face us, all of those have been put on the residents. If there's an issue, you know, it's easy to say, well, that's a police issue. That's a traffic issue. That is a, that's a school issue. It becomes one because we pick up the phone and, or it becomes one because we have to be the jerks who are out there telling people to get off our lawns, to get out of our backyard. I mean, we've got a fenced-in area for our dog. I can't tell you the number of times when we've gone out there and found somebody in the dog's fenced-in area to access the field. Hey, part of that is the fun of living here. I remember when we were living here and you could hear the lions down on the field when we had the circus. That is part of the charm. But part of the charm ends when it's time to go to bed at night and put our kids to bed and get ready for school. When there are activities in the field, our kids can't go to sleep. They can't do our homework and we are attentive. Right? All of our lights are on in the back of our house when things are going on in the field. Where our doors are locked. Before we go to bed, we take a look in the yard to make sure there's nobody out there or nobody's thrown something or done anything that we need to attend to. That is on us. So again, not no, but no now. Let's approach this more thoughtfully and when we do, I think we need to say, be clear on what we're optimizing for because the story keeps shifting. First, we're told that there are teams that are suffering and having to go out of town because they can't get playing time. Well, then we hear that, well, maybe these are not school teams or town rec teams, but teams nonetheless. The next thing we're told is it's very, we've invested in this field, so now we have to use it and get the most out of it. And then finally, there's this issue of we want to maximize revenue. And if it's about maximizing revenue, where is that going to stop? Are we going to have concession stands down there? Maybe it's a good idea. How late at night do we have concession stands? What do we sell? When is it open? Are we going to, what happens if a semi-pro team comes along and says, hey, guys, I will pay all of the cost of your field if you give us access and let us have games there? Well, that could be something that could reasonably answer these interests. So I think-
Mr. McLendon, you've reached three minutes. Are you about to finish up?
Last sentence then. Let's put the issues on the table. Let's lay them out. And as Ian has said, as Tom has said, as Rachel has said, I think all of us are very open to talking about ways that we can address those. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, Mr. McLendon. We hope you hang around as well. I believe we have time for one more public comment. We had 20 minutes. We have 20 minutes for public comment and Mr. Gill is next in line and has been waiting. So we will take Mr. Gill as our final public comment this evening.
Can you see me now?
Again.
Okay. I thank you very much for your time. I do want to address some of these issues that just kind of came up now. One, Mystic School, the idea of lights was never a consideration from the town's point of view. One, there was no money to even put up lights. The neighbors asked if there were going to be lights and they said no because it's not even a playing field. It's a, it's more of a recreation area than it is an actual playing field. As far as what we're talking about as far as the traffic, yes, I sympathize. I live next to a school and Leonard Field, which has zero parking spaces. And if you look at the way the fields are laid out, Molton Stadium has two 11V11 fields. It's 44 players that can play at one time. Leonard has four 8V8 fields lined in the spring and fall. That's a lot more people that attend. So every field, and I'm not saying that there's an issue here. What I'm saying is there's issues at fields all the time. And what the neighbors, I do sympathize and there is a problem. I am not saying that there's not. There's definitely a problem from the 3:30 start time for high school sports and that are, when the teachers are obligated to stay in school till 4 o'clock. There's no parking spots for those first team to come and park in that parking lot. So it creates that, you know, disaster that you guys have in your neighborhood. That kids are changing, hurrying to get the, onto the field. I get it. But what we're talking about is you have 100 some odd kids that aren't playing. And yes, there is youth sports that are playing. When I say youth, that means Winchester Youth Lacrosse is playing out of town because they don't have field space. They're all Winchester residents. And they don't have an opportunity to rent that field because the high school uses the turf back-to-back. The 3:30 slot time to 5:00 and the 5:00 to 7:30. So there's no time to rent that turf. So we put 100 kids on skillings at one time, which is also not safe. Because I know we're concerned about the kids always. But the reality is the time that you guys are having traffic issue, yes, football games at night, but I know the police are there and they've tried to resolve those. But at that 3:30, 4:30 timeframe is a disaster. I get it. But what we're, you know, what most likely is going to be renting of these fields, first of all, it goes to residents first. It goes to high school, then it goes to youth sports and then there's an opportunity for a private program to rent it. Whenever you say private, no outside team, 100% people who are not residents have come in and rented. It's always been a Winchester resident that's running a camp for some soccer kids or lacrosse or football. So they would have an-
I'm sorry, Mr. Gill. I'm sorry to interrupt. You're at three minutes as well. I'll allow you another 30 seconds if you'd like to-
Thank you. What we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is accommodate enough field space that allows youth kids, youth residents of this town to have field space. It's getting cramped every year, worse and worse because we keep taking, skillings has now become one grass field instead of the three it used to be. We are taking fields away. We're talking about the pool, which is also very important, but that's going to take away another field over there. We can't continue just to let everything go away. And, you know, I understand that the neighbors have to be worked with. No other field does a policy happen and then not until the neighbors have negotiated. Yes, there's going to be a time that it might be rented. Winchester Youth Lacrosse sent a letter tonight to to the school committee basically saying they would rent it three or four nights a week, no later than 9 o'clock. It'd be very rare that somebody's gonna come on afterwards. So it is for the youth of Winchester and there's not a lot of traffic with seventh and eighth graders coming to play lacrosse.
Thanks so much. I hope you are able to stick around for our discussion as well. Thank you very much to everyone who was able to participate in public comment this evening. If you were unable to participate and still would like your comments entered into the record, please make sure to email them to myself and copy Dr. Hackett and we'll make sure that anyone who was unable to speak publicly tonight's comments will also be entered. With that, we will move on to superintendent and chair remarks. Dr. Hackett, did you have anything to share this evening?
I actually do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair seeds as well. I know we've got a number of items to get to and some residents who are here with us this evening that are anxious to hear our discussion later. So we will move along to the consideration of approval of Dr. Vital as the Winchester public school physician. Tonight, we are looking to appoint Dr. Vital as the new school physician. Due to the previous retirement of our long-term physician, the committee had reviewed the job description and posted for a new school physician with a stipend of $5,000. Tonight, we are pleased to present to you a new school physician- Tonight, we are pleased to present to you a new school physician. We are so happy to have Dr. Vitale be able to contribute to our district. Ms. Kirby, Dr. Hackett, did anybody have anything you'd like to add to that?
Ms. Kirby, did you unmute for a reason?
No, I, no.
Okay. All right. No, just I just to to repeat what you said, Ms. Burstam, it's 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 great to have Dr. Vitale with us, the fact that she's a in town physician and willing to contribute over time because we certainly know. You know, the stipend is as much an honorarium as anything else and but it is a key position. It does have responsibilities over the course of the year. So very happy to have her with us.
Mr. Nixon, I saw your hand go up.
Sure, just I I totally agree with Dr. Hackett said it really is an honorarium. Her time is valuable. I just want to acknowledge that anytime a professional sort of joins us in a supporting role, you know, they're bringing their own professional background, but oftentimes that of their their peers in their workplace. So it's especially exciting that she comes to us from a really well established and respected group of pediatricians in Winchester that are very well connected. Not only to our students, but many of the students in our surrounding districts who, you know, face some similar challenges and struggles. And so I just appreciate that. I think when the time comes, she kind of brings to bear her own sort of perspective. But in some respect, I think maybe some input from her for her from her peers. So I'm really excited about the appointment. And I thank her. I thank Ms. Kirby and Dr. Hackett for the recommendation.
Mr. Brady.
I also just wanted to thank Dr. Vitale for taking on the role working in schools. It's very helpful to have someone like her and her expertise serving the system. And so I just wanted to make a motion to approve her appointment as the school physician.
I'm happy to second.
And as Mr. Nixon and Mr. Brady said, with gratitude for her work and her service, understanding that the stipend that she receives is just an honorarium. And it is a it is a vital and important role for us in the district. So we are just so pleased that she's joining us. Thank you very much. I will take a roll call vote since we are on Zoom. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Bollinese?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. With that, we will move on to the consideration of approval of the employment contract for Heather Geary, the new director of special education. We are also pleased, I believe, Dr. Hackett, Ms. Geary is with us this evening.
He is with us. We are very pleased to have Ms. Geary with us. And I know this committee understands that this position was posted a couple of times. There was good involvement from both parents and staff through the process. And we waited to find the right person and I feel pretty confident that we did find the right person. In fact, so we're very happy to have her with us. She started on Monday, so she does know where her office is. Actually, she's off to quite a quick start. She's made a lot of contacts with staff. And as you know, there's quite a bit of things to be done right off quickly. So with with that, I would just introduce you to to Heather Gary. I don't know, Heather, if you would like to say a couple of things.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm very excited to start the year off in Winchester. I mean, it's been a very busy week and it's been great to meet staff and meet everybody at central office and I look forward to meeting more in the community as the season kicks off later in August and when the school starts.
Thank you so much. We're so pleased to have you with us. And I also just wanted to follow up on Dr. Hackett's remarks and just say that what a great process it was and having you come to us and in hiring that we did have parents and the Winchester Special Education PAC represented on the committee as well as members of our special education staff. So you have come highly recommended. So we are excited to have you here. Did any other members have anything that they would like to add?
Just wanted to say welcome to Heather. Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you. Jump in, anyone.
Get him.
I just make a motion to authorize Dr. Hackett to execute a contract with Ms. Geary. The Director of Special Education.
All in favor, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinese?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. I also wanted to note that Mr. Hopcroft was unable to be with us this evening, but that he did submit a letter of support and welcome to you, Ms. Geary as well. So while he's not able to vote this evening, he did express his his welcome to you too.
Thank you. I look forward to this year.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item. I do see with us this evening, I thought I did and now I don't. Ms. Alan Emma, yeah. Jen, is Peter still here?
I think Frank was elevating him. We were going back and forth.
Okay. I will, I will move on to the introduction then. So the next item on our agenda is to hear a report from the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment, the MCIA about the launch of their new school quality measures dashboard, which includes data for the Winchester Public Schools. MCIA is a partnership of eight Massachusetts Public School Districts and their local teacher unions joined together to create a fair and effective accountability system that offers a more dynamic picture of student learning and school quality than standardized testing alone. MCIA seeks to increase achievement for all students, close prevailing opportunity gaps among subgroups and prepare diverse group of students for college, career and life. The MCIA School Quality Measure Framework aims to describe the full measure of what makes a good school, free of the narrowness and racial bias of standardized test scores. The SQM dashboard presents results from student and teacher surveys as well as administrative data collected in each school. Importantly, the results are never used as a method for ranking schools against each other. But instead, this is used as a starting point for understanding school strengths and areas of growth. And with that, I welcome Peter from MCIA.
Thank you, Michelle. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
And it's really good to be on with you all. I appreciate being invited. I know a few school committee members, Michelle and Karen, from some work that we have done pre pandemic and the fact that I remember anything pre pandemic says a lot about the work that we that we did together. And for for those who don't know me, it's it's nice to meet you all. I am the School Quality Measures Project Director at MCIA, the organization that that Michelle just introduced. And today, in the time that we have, my plan is to give you all an overview of the resources that are available through MCIA and I'll specifically be anchoring us in an online dashboard that we're very excited to be debuting this year. The consortium has been around since the 1617 school year and Winchester is one of our founding members. But through through money that was raised recently, we were able to revamp our online data dashboard. And I think it's something that can be very useful. I hope it's something that can be very useful to the schools in Winchester in terms of understanding student and teacher experience of school and then developing continuous improvement plans or action plans based on based on that. So that's my plan for the time that we have. We'll only really be able to dip our toes into it, but I hope that through the presentation, you all will have the links and the the framing necessary to kind of dive in on your own. You know, as you see fit. Does that plan all sound good?
That sounds great.
Madam Chair, can I ask, as Peter goes through this, if there are questions along the way? Do we ask them or we wait till he wraps up?
Peter, what's easier for you?
I encourage you to ask away. Any questions that you have, as you have them, please feel free. I have a little PowerPoint presentation that'll walk us through, but I want to keep this informal and conversational. So yeah, please feel free to jump in. So I'm just sharing my screen here. This is a dashboard, but before we dive into that, I'm gonna, we're gonna sort of like work our way up to that. So let me let me go into the full share mode. Hopefully you all can see that. Great. I can't exactly see everybody on my tiny screen with the share. So if you do have a question, please feel free to just to to speak up in case I don't see you. Great. So here is, here's the the deck that we put together to to kind of give an overview of of what we have available at MCIA. So today we're going to talk about the dashboard itself. There's three primary pages to it. Each of which offers a different level of insight into school quality in in schools in Winchester and all the schools in the consortium. So high level overview that I hope you all will leave with, again, sort of like the 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 fundamentals for then exploring the dashboard on your own. And then we'll dive into some topics that I know are particularly of interest in Winchester. Teacher and student comparison. So we have teacher surveys and student surveys, and it's very interesting to see how teachers and students can be rating the same thing, but be rating it very differently, right? So we'll we'll look at, we'll look at some some examples of those socio emotional learning experiences. I'll highlight the specific pieces of our school quality measures framework that are that are great for analyzing SEL. And then we, as I mentioned earlier, we've been around since 1617. So that means we have data now pre pandemic and, you know, after the start of the pandemic, at least, I don't know the best way to say it. But you all, wherever we are now and whatever this is called, we have data. You know, consistently over that period of time. And I have questions in the next step, so y'all feel free to jump in anytime. Okay, here is the the main piece of information that you will need, which is the web link to the to the dashboard itself. Those of you who are familiar with MCIA may know that we had a older version of a dashboard built on a shoestring budget. That link is basically the same as what you see there. It's the backslash welcome that gets you to the new experience. When you visit that website, you will be able to to choose any school in the consortium through the drop down menu that's lifted listed alphabetically. You'll be able to find Winchester and and select any of the schools in Winchester that you want to dive into. There's also a navigation guide there for your future reference. I mentioned that there's three pages to the dashboard and I'm going to quickly highlight what what's 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 available at each of those. After you select a district and a school, you'll land on an overview page. Now, it's always hard to explain some of this because by definition, our school quality measures framework is holistic, which means that there's a lot. And I'll give you sort of like an overview of all of the things that are there. And if it feels like a lot of information, in part, that's sort of like how it's designed. We want a holistic view of school quality. So you will land on a page that shows you our five overarching categories. As you can see listed there, I won't read those for you all. Then you'll see these little circles that give you a high level sense of where there are strengths and where there are areas for growth. And we're looking at real data from Winchester High School in the 1819 school year. And you can look very clearly and see, okay, teachers and leadership. Now that's a big topic, right? How do we break that down? Well, teachers and then leadership. And underneath that category, teachers and the teaching environment in the 1819 school year at Winchester High School, the survey data was reading that as a strength. Leadership, the survey data was rating as an area for improvement. This is a one year annual snapshot. So all of the data that you see here should be taken within its appropriate context in terms of the conclusions that are made. But nonetheless, that's what the that's what the the once annual survey was telling us that year. And then you can look across these various, we call them subcategories, safety, relationships, academic orientation. Those are the, that's how we break down school culture. Can look, look across those and get a high level sense. Maybe all you want is a high level sense. Or maybe you want to dive one level deeper into the dashboard. That's going to take you to this next page. This is just what you see when you scroll down on the overview page. Now, here are, this is the 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 smallest grain size that we'll that we'll look at. The the topics that we looked at earlier, teachers in the teaching environment, those are then broken down further. Professional qualifications, you'd imagine, fits under that teaching and teaching environment subcategory, which fits under teachers and leadership, the overarching category. And so this gives you one level deeper into the 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 data that are available for each school. And it's organized according to area of strength at the top. And then I had to, I had to crop the picture because it was too big for the slide, but it'll go all the way down to the 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 specific measure that is identified as the the sort of highest priority for growth. Pretty said a lot, and I've only talked about one page of the dashboard. So I'm going to pause here and see if anybody has questions.
So I'll jump in with one, if I may, Madam Chair. So Peter, for especially for parents that are watching or who will watch this later on, when can maybe leadership is a good example. You talked about as an area for growth. Can you describe to parents how that rating is achieved? In other words, the assessment for opportunities for growth and leadership is measured against what? Either either our peer districts or against some ideal? If you could help sort of understand how that is is framed?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it really gets to an important piece of this dashboard. By by like by definition, all of the ratings are against an external criteria, not against other schools or other districts. So even within Winchester, we're not comparing Ambrose to Lynch, for example. Because our our belief at MCIA is that all schools can be good schools. And these school comparisons inevitably, you know, lead to a normal curve where some are, some are exceptional, some are below average. That's not the message about schools that we want to promote at MCIA. So this is a good transition into the next page, which is the browse page. You might see analyze and browse. Go ahead.
Peter, before you go into that, could I just jump in with one thing on that? That also, Chris and everyone else, like that ties in so nicely with this major grant we're doing with WIFI right now at the secondary level where we're trying to move to like our standards based grading. Like, and that just aligns so nicely with this work with MCIA because a lot of people don't know with different standardized testing like the MCAS, you know, what we get every year are the scaled scores. But behind that scaled score is a raw score that changes every single year. It's not set to a standard. They just move it. So there's a certain percentile in needs improvement, a certain percentile in provision and advance. So that's part of why this work is so meaningful to us is that we're measuring against the standard. And students measure then against the standard when they do the PBAs in district versus measuring against each other.
Right. And that standard is is visible in a in a slightly more clear way on the on the next page. So over the top, there's overview. We talked about that page and there's browse and we're looking at an example of the browse page here. Each gauge has a dark black line, which is the the benchmark. That's that's essentially the 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 cut point that we have identified between area of strength, if you're above it, or area for growth, if you're below. Now, the way that those were identified, that we conducted interviews and focus groups with teachers and school leaders in our flagship districts, Winchester being one at the launch of the consortium. And we said, okay, everything is here is rated on a one to five scale. For professional qualifications, what's good? Where would you call it? Where would you draw the line on a one to five scale between what's a what's a strength and what's an area for growth? Effective practices, professional community, so on and so forth, all of these measures. Where is that line? And we took that information from the interviews and focus groups that we did to to identify a boundary. Again, all of this is most useful, in my opinion, for. for generating conversation and leading to broader inquiry. And so somebody might draw the line somewhere else. Somebody might draw the line in a different place than where we have drawn it. Great. That's a great conversation to dive into our values and beliefs about, about how we measure school quality. Nonetheless, the, the, the sort of way that this is presented here is each subcategory and each measure against, against its, its boundary. And you can see just looking at professional qualifications and effective practices, right? That the, just visually, you can tell that the line is slightly lower on effective practices, slightly higher on professional qualifications. And everything is, every, every measure is, is weighed against its distance from its benchmark.
Peter, can I ask you one more question about that then?
Yeah, please feel free to jump in.
Are the, are the cut lines something that are established and revisited only from time to time? Because you're building this dashboard and this data for evaluation over the long term? Or are these, are the cut lines, do they move year to year? So a perfect example is the slide you have, teachers in the teaching environment. We all acknowledge the teaching environment was very difficult during COVID, not ideal. I mean, we had a few kids who in particular excelled being remote, but it was very difficult for everyone. One might argue our expectations then should change because the environment by necessity changed. Or by contrast, does the cut line stay the same? Because those are sort of what our expectations are over the long haul. Can you talk about that?
So our intention is to review the cut lines every several years. Not so, so more often than never, certainly, and less often than every year. And we were actually under, we were engaged in the process of having the same community conversations that we had at the launch of the consortium. We had begun those in February of 2020. And then we all know what happened. After that, we have since been in conversation with a psychometrics professor at UMass Amherst, who is going to work with us to find more precise lines for each of those. Because we recognize how important that is.
And Peter, you used an interesting phrase. You, you said that they were established with flagship districts. And I think when parents and community members hear flagship districts, they think about those niche rankings or the Boston Globe rankings of things that fall in the top 25. But could you explain a little bit about, just briefly for us, what, how MCIA thinks of those districts? Because I think it's a little different idea.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out because it is a different idea for sure. Yeah, I, I use the term flagship to refer to our founding districts. So I apologize, I apologize if I use that word like incorrectly or, or in a confusing way. Yeah, our founding districts were Somerville, Attleboro, Winchester. And I think we're, yeah, and Boston, Boston was an early, an early adopter for sure. And so there were, there were focus group conversations in each of those communities. I was going to say Revere, but I believe that they joined later. And everybody can see on our website, the eight districts, the ones that I haven't mentioned are Wareham, Milford, and I think, oh, and Lowell. So all of which joined later. So there's Winchester Voice in here for sure. But to, to Mr. Nixon's point is, i- it's exactly the case that, you know, things change over time and it's our, our hope to, to have those changes reflected in where we draw the boundaries.
And I think one of the powers in the, the districts that are part of the consortium is that they are very diverse from each other as well. So I think it's when establishing those early boundaries, you got a lot of different voices in the, as part of that as well.
Yeah, and that's, that's an important value for us to have a diversity of voices in, 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 in the mix and, and, and thinking through these really big, important questions about what, what does a good school mean? You know? So on the, on the browse page, this is just a screenshot, but underneath those gauges, you will see dropdown menus. Those dropdown menus will list the specific survey questions or administrative data items that inform that measure. So anybody who's interested in learning about how the, how the, how we get to these ratings, can see the individual, you can see the individual questions there. All of those questions are rated by students or teachers on, again, on a, on a, on a one to five scale. Think of like, you know, strongly disagree to strongly agree type, type, type rating. And you can also see the, the, the response rates for each individual subcategory. So this is what's happening on the browse page. What I want to do is take you to the analyze page because that is for me where, where there's just the most fun stuff to look at and analyze and manipulate the data. So let's go to the analyze page. I'll, again, I'll give an overview and then we'll, then we'll jump into some, a few examples from Winchester schools that I found particularly interesting when I was reviewing the data. So now on the analyze page, you will be able to see trends over time. You will also be able to see student and teacher survey data disaggregated from each other. I picked Lincoln because it has data available for all the years that since we have been in business as a consortium. You can select those years and you'll simply see the color coded legend on the side there telling you which color corresponds with each, each year. And this, this is a pretty straightforward survey or a straightforward example where students and teachers are both reporting high levels of student sense of belonging. Anything in the approval range is strong. It's extremely rare for anything to be in the ideal, on the ideal range. It's sort of like a nod to the fact that it's, there's so many things that schools do. It's almost impossible to do any one of those things at an ideal level. And that was true before the pandemic. So here's, here's, you know, here's an example of, of trends over time. And you can simply use the dropdown menus here to navigate to the, the five categories that you saw on the overview page and then the subcategories that are nested within each of those. And then you'll see, again, the measures that, that, that make those up. So students' sense of belonging is one of the way, the, one of the ways that we look at relationships. You'll notice that if data are not available for a certain year, then that bar will simply be omitted. So you'll notice that the teacher, the teacher section of this graph has four bars, whereas the other sections have five. It looks like the teacher survey, that, that means that, so the teachers are missing the 1920 school year here. That means that the teacher response rates in that particular year were below 25%. Anything below 25% won't be displayed out of fear of showing biased or skewed data. Let's dive into some of the, some of the topics that I know you all are interested in, in Winchester. I previewed these earlier, student teacher comparisons, SEL, pre pandemic to now. Here is an example of a survey item that shows a pretty interesting difference between the ratings that teachers are given and the ratings that students are giving. And if you had just stayed at the overview or browse pages, you would only see the data that's, that's displayed here in the all data. When you come over to the analyze page and the student data is separated out from teachers, you can see that there are differences in how each group are rating, in how each group are rating academic challenge in this case, where students are reporting that they are challenged. Teachers not only are reporting that students in, in, in the survey results are not only reporting that, that academic challenge is an area for growth, it's also consistently going further into that area of growth over time. The fascinating trend, right? Not only the difference between those two, but the declining trend just on the teacher's side. Again, that difference would be masked if you just looked at these data, which show a very, a fairly kind of stable rating over time, a little bit above the approval, a little bit below. Now, does this definitively prove anything? No, of course not. But does it point towards further inquiry? My hope is that it does. My hope is that this sparks some ideas from the folks who know the schools better, just everybody on this call that's beyond me. Like I, I, you know, I helped to facilitate the surveys, but you all know the schools. And so I see this trend and I think, oh, this, this is, this is telling me something about differences in beliefs between students and teachers. There's, I'm sure there is other data that you will have that might help inform this conversation or maybe other ideas or theories that you all have about these differences. And those are the types of conversations that we hope to spark with the data that we present here. Nothing is a definitive statement or sentence or, you know, nothing is, 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 is set in stone. But I imagine that people would have different opinions about why this data is the case. And that's great. Those, then we should talk about those things.
And Peter, this one's back to district wide, not just Lincoln, correct?
This is from McCall specifically.
On McCall, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. I should have, yeah. There are no district wide numbers on the site in part because we wanted to avoid the tendency that people have to kind of look at my school in one window, then open up another tab, look at the district and say, okay, this is a good school because we're above, this is a bad school because we're below. It's more, it's more about having these rich conversations about what's happening within a school.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sure. So taking a moment with the SEL topic, we, here's a lot of, here are a lot of measures that we won't have a chance to dive into, but I want to highlight these for you all because as I mentioned at the, at the very beginning, this is by definition holistic, which means that there's a lot of, there's a lot of measures that go into this. And I know that you all are focused on socio emotional learning and there are a lot of measures within the framework that point towards different aspects of, of socio emotional learning in school. Each of these measures are things that by, that verbatim, you can find on the overview page. They're all clickable and that it will take you directly to the browse page for any of these topics. Each are informed by either student surveys, teacher surveys, administrative data, or all three. And each will also be visible on the, on the analyze page. You saw the example earlier from student sense of belonging. When I was kind of demonstrating the overview page or the, the analyze page. And then there's, you know, any number of these underneath here that, that hopefully should, could like shed light on some of the questions that you all having around SEL. Of course, in the interest of time, we won't, we won't have a chance to dive into these. But I, 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 you know, I encourage you all to, to dive in and always feel free to reach out to me with any questions or feedback that you have about it. Now we'll sort of unpack one of these socio emotional learning skills, again, based on real data from, in this case, VO. Oh, Karen, I see your hand. Please.
Thanks. I was just wondering for the benefit of the audience, when, on the website, do you actually see or list the questions that go into each of these categories? So that people understand what kinds of questions were being asked and what you were getting at?
On the browse page. So if you were on the browse page here, I'll actually just, I'll, I'll exit out of this window and demonstrate it in the website itself. So we're looking at socio, social and emotional health at Vincent Owen in the most recent school year. As soon as you select, it'll automatically, it'll automatically update. You can go to health. Here's social, social and emotional health. And if you click on this button right here, it'll open up to show all of the survey questions that students, in this case, have answered in order to rate their socio emotional health.
Thanks.
No problem.
And the surveys are anonymous as well, Peter, correct?
The surveys are anonymous for students and teachers. And the surveys go through a cleaning process. So if a student has just rushed through the survey and clicked, just click through to get it done, I'll see the time on my side. I'll see that it took them, you know, 60 seconds to complete the survey. It doesn't, that's, that's, that's telling me that maybe that student wasn't thinking through the responses. And those types of responses, or if there's, your student entered just all ones for every single, every single question, those types of responses will be removed so that we have confidence in the, the value of the data that we're presenting.
May I ask a follow up since you're on this slide?
Please.
So I had it, in my mind, I had a question in your previous slide about physical health and whether that was objective or subjective. So I'm, I'm reading the fine print and it says draws on anonymous teacher reports about student access to PE and activity. And it also includes a measure of medical staff to student ratio. Is that maybe a, a more convoluted way of just saying, is that like student population to nurse ratio in the building?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
How many nurses, how many students? And then, and then developing a ratio based on that. For medical staff that are one to one, those wouldn't be counted because that person is only assigned to a special education student as opposed to servicing the entire school.
And then, again, not to get weedy on this, but because this is an area that's identified for growth. Might one look at that and think that, gee, we don't have, you know, kids need more access to PE. I'm curious, like which teachers are, is it PE teachers that are being surveyed? And so they're sort of reporting, I'm not seeing all the kids that I thought I would see. How, how might we use this as an example? How might a district like Winchester look at that? Look at the dropdown and kind of figure out what do we do to grow?
Yeah. So these questions are answered by all teachers, not just the teachers that are specific to like the topics here. So physical health, obviously PE teachers would have a close read on that. The, but the, the survey questions are provided not only to certified teachers, but to paraprofessionals, guidance counselors, school librarians, anybody who makes up the school community. So it's understandable that, so these are, these are survey instruments by definition, by definition, right, are perception instruments. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. This isn't a concrete measure of student physical health. That would be beyond the scope of anything that we can conduct and it's beyond the reach of a school, right? But we can, we can try to get a sense through what the people who are in the building, what the people in the building are telling us, we can try to get a sense of, are there opportunities for students to be engaged in physical activity on a regular basis? So that's, that's what we're sort of like trying to get at here. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other thoughts, questions? And no need to apologize for getting into the weeds. I love getting into the weeds and I'm happy to do that. Anytime you all can, like I said, feel free to reach out.
The chair would encourage them to reach out to you if they would like to have a longer about any of this, because I, I could take up hours of your time.
And I hope you will. I realize not right now on this very hot summer night, but, but yeah, I hope you will. So let me, let me go back to the slideshow here and, and we can look at an example of, of where socio emotional health has an interesting pre pandemic, post pandemic trend that when I saw this was actually counterintuitive. Again, real data from VO. In the years leading up to the pandemic, students are rating their socio emotional health in the growth area. Following the pandemics, following the start of the pandemic, students are rating their socio emotional health in the approval area. Following the pandemics, following the start of the pandemic, students are rating their socio emotional health in the approval area. I, you know, on balance would expect the opposite. Then I see these data and I think to myself, maybe there's something about being home that was a comfort. Uh, but that's me, that's me, that's like from somebody who's outside the district and, uh, has a general knowledge of, of K-12 issues in Massachusetts, but doesn't have the context specific knowledge that you all do. And it's interesting because it wasn't just one year. It's the three years since, since this whole thing started that students have rated their, uh, their socio emotional health positively at VO. And so that tells, that tells me something that feels like a trend. Again, like with all this stuff, I, I, you know, it should, we, we hope it leads to further conversation.
And Peter, in case this appears on other slides, and it might, when, when you've got graphs that reflect student responses and then to the right, it says measure not taken based on teacher surveys. I, I want to be clear then that when we look at all data, that seems to match exactly what it reports for all students. In other words, it's not like you had a low, you had too few responses to post strictly under teachers. Or if you did, like, are there four or five responses that get wrapped into your all data response on the right? You know what I'm saying? Or it's, when, when we see that block not based on teacher surveys, are we right in thinking that under all data? That's basically just a copy of all students?
For this particular example, that's, that is the case. The only other, uh, the only reason that all data might differ from the all students in a case like this is if we had collected administrative data.
Okay.
In, in which case you might see the bar higher or lower. Uh, and, and that would be, that would be based on the administrative data. Uh, and the, the, the browse page will always tell you how many administrative data items are associated with each skill.
Got it.
So staying with this for a moment, um, I'm, I would love to hear from you all because I, I, I don't have the opportunity to have good context specific conversations with folks about our data. I'm, I'm the guy that's like living behind the computer and crunching the, the numbers and cleaning the data. And now it's fun to be out here in the real world. And, uh, and so as I mentioned earlier, I can only go so far in my interpretation of data like this. When folks who are here see these data, what, what are the questions that come up for you? Or even like the initial explanations for, for what we're seeing here?
In this particular slide, Peter?
Yeah, right. Or, or anything that we've seen so far.
Well, I mean, I, I would just pose that maybe the, the opportunity exists in the dashboard to kind of, to illustrate where there may or may not be connections. To your point, Peter, maybe the, 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 the three bars to the right under social emotional reflects students being happier to be home. But I might throw a contrary view at you. I think you showed under McCall, if I saw that the response rate among teachers showed an area for growth among academic challenge, right? So is that the correlation? Is that maybe the expectations were different or the curriculum was different or the assessments were different, right? I mean, was there something different about the academic day above and beyond where the physical setting was? But this is where I just find this stuff really fascinating. And then I think all, for me, all I could do is just pose some questions. And then based on what those are, probably sit down with someone like Jen Ellen Emma and figure out how do we get at it?
That's the dream right there. I mean, that's, that's, that's why, yeah, that's, that's what we're in business for is posing those questions and then meeting with folks in your district to, to dive into it in more detail.
Just an overarching comment, Peter. I mean, what I, what I love about this for Winchester is that, as you know, Winchester has spent, um, the last several years really investing heavily into SEL. And to quantify SEL is always the trick. It's always the, the question is, you know, how do we make, how do we know what this, whether our efforts are paying off? Where are our kids at any given point in time? Understanding that this is, this is a snapshot in time. But I think as much as anything, it allows us to really do what, uh, what both Mr. Nixon, you said is to start to ask the questions around what does, you know, what does this chart mean? And, and how much of this is community and wellbeing? And I could see very easily, uh, coming out of this and, and maybe even starting to sit down with teachers and kids about, what do you think of these results? And when you took this, if you remember taking this and how did you think about this question? Because I think it's not until we, uh, ask those questions and get down to, uh, to our staff and our teachers and our kids that we're really going to kind of have a better picture of what, what these data are telling us.
Yeah, those conversations are so, so important. And those, that was exactly the work that I was engaged with, uh, um, with, with Karen and Michelle earlier, before the pandemic started of meeting with students to talk about the, uh, the work, uh, the, the data that they're seeing. And do you remember taking this and, and why, why do you think the trends are headed in this direction and, and not? And inevitably, you know, there are multiple theories that emerge. Uh, and tho- those conversations just lead to better and better, better and better theories. And then ultimately towards action, ultimately towards, okay, let's try, let's try this. Let's try implementing this change and see if it moves the needle.
I think it's also powerful and challenge our own perceptions. Particularly like when we were looking at the academic challenge, um, slide. You can look at the, the teachers, um, maybe feeling like they aren't able to challenge students as much as they are like and think that, you know, they may, they may have, it may be add, and that may add to culture in the school. And that the teachers may feel pressure to, to provide more and more and more. But in fact, the teacher, the students are reporting that they, they feel enough. So I think that, um, sometimes what we perceive as adults looking at a system is not necessarily how students are experiencing the system. And I think that, um, that this is a really great example of, of conversations that could come out like that as well.
There's also, there's always a potential for, um, for supplemental questions. This is something that we, we, we did, uh, in Winchester in the most recent, um, school year and in the 2021 school year. We have a standard slate of questions and that's what populates the dashboard. But in the past two school years, we added questions about students' experiences of quality performance assessment or projects, project-based learning. Because it's specific to Winchester, there isn't, it's, it's not something that's displayed on the dashboard. It's kind of like beyond our standard menu, but it's, it's, it's available. And, uh, you know, that, those types of, those, those, that type of data collection is something that's always available to all of our districts. And something that can help dive in and provide more data for, for the kinds of conversations we're describing here.
And Peter, if you walked us through this tonight, that this is all very sort of school building specific. This is site based. Are you able now, or might we be able eventually, since we're a K-12, pre-K-12 pipeline? Are you able to kind of track a class of students through Winchester? And their response to some of these standard questions, is that maybe in the future?
That's, that's a, that's, that's a fascinating like example because we're, we still think of ourselves as like a little startup, you know? But now we have, you know, six years of data and pretty soon we might, we're, we're, we're getting closer to the full, the full pre-K-12, uh, pipeline. And, uh, even though the functionality doesn't exist in the dashboard currently, these types of, these types of use cases, as they call them, are, uh, things, it's feedback is always helpful. This, this version of the dashboard with the, um, with the year-to-year comparisons launched only a month ago. Uh, so this is all very, very new, uh, and, and, uh, getting, getting feedback on what would be more useful is always helpful for us.
And Peter, I don't mean to rush you, but just to give you a time check, we've got about 10 more minutes.
Yeah, great, no problem.
Thank you. Well, we'll bring you back if we don't finish.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate it. Uh, but yeah, yeah, great. I don't, I don't want to take too much of everyone's time. Let's go to, I think I have one more example of pre pandemic. And, and, and present times comparisons. This, this, this is just like the other slides meant to kind of like highlight, highlight interesting themes, uh, that happen across the district. This, this is, uh, specific to engagement in school in, uh, Morocco. Am I, am I pronouncing that incorrectly?
You got it, Morocco.
Morocco. Uh, and yeah, you can see, uh, engagement high, uh, in the years before the pandemic started, then a dip, and then engagement picks back up. Again, sort of counterintuitive, there could be many theories about why this is the case. And hopefully some of those theories lead to good conversations, lead to, lead to action. In the interest of time, I'll leave my, uh, I'll leave my contact information up there. And I'm happy to take any other, any other questions that you all have, or I can switch to the, uh, dashboard itself and walk you through anything that you'd be interested in.
Peter, just one last, again, weedy question, but much like our student, um, school youth risk behavior survey, which we're careful to administer at the same time of year, each time we administer it. Are your survey questions, do they go out at the same time of year? That, that graph you just showed is interesting, thinking about what the 1920 school year was like. So can you share that with us?
Yeah, in anticipation of this question, we looked up the exact survey dates, uh, for the 1920 administration. Teachers completed the survey in, uh, mid February that year. Students completed the survey in the first week of March. So things had started to change, but hadn't fully changed into the world that we're in right now. So it's entirely possible that that student rating is, um, is reflective of something else. That, that school year, that wasn't, you know, all the stuff that happened later.
And then generally speaking, for your comparisons year over year, is your goal then to survey teachers and students at the same time of year each year?
We, we do try to keep it, uh, consistent. The, the challenges of the most recent school years, as we all know, have, has made consistency a, uh, you know, that's a, a challenge. But I, uh, I work with the district leaders in each school to, to plan the administration of the surveys. And we do try to keep it as close as possible. Usually that window between, you know, MLK and February break is a good window, I think, to do the surveys. We're not, enough school year has happened that the surveys are sort of like reflective of that year. Yet you haven't gotten into, um, uh, you know, to MCAS and all of the, the, um, the challenges that come with that as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sure.
Back to, I mean, Peter, I think you're, you're running over time because of all the questions that we're asking, because you've just presented great information. So I don't think that's on you and I'm going to contribute to that. So this is your fault that you're running over time. How long, how long is, how long do the surveys generally take? And then I just have a follow-up question depending on that answer.
Sure. We, we want the surveys to be between 10 and 15 minutes. And I'm, I'm referring to the teacher and the student. For, for, for a teacher, 15 to 20 max. But you know, there's diminishing returns after, uh, after a certain number of, um, questions. Now you see a lot of data here. The student survey in total is 66 questions, but we do not give all 66 questions to every student because that would be overwhelming. So each individual student gets 44 questions and the 44 are evenly distributed. So students who don't get asked about their engagement, uh, in school, uh, will be asked about other topics and, and so on and so forth.
I'm just curious about, how, how long does it take you to take those data and put them? And I know the dashboard is brand spanking new, so maybe you don't really know for sure. As you get better at it, I mean, is, what's that process look like? Is that, is that weeks? Is that months? Is it days?
We, we try to turn it around in two to three weeks. And we've been, we've been, we've been working on the process to try to streamline it as much as possible. The, the main task after all the data are collected, the main task is cleaning. And I mentioned a few examples earlier of sort of like erroneous results. And, but there's a whole laundry list of things that we go through in order to make sure that the data that we're presenting is of high quality. Once, once that cleaning process is complete for all the schools, then, um, then yeah, then I, I give it to our web designer and he puts it up.
I think you're going to really like this question. So with that,
Awesome.
You might not. With, with that, would it be, is it possible to think about in the future administering? Because it's such a, really, it's a, it's a really quick hit survey. I love the way you talked about it and it's a sampling. Would it be possible to do that, do this more than once in a year? Understanding that you, maybe the question bank needs to, to fill out more. But I'm just thinking about how do kids come into us in September? How are things going at some other point in the year? And then how are they feeling about how things are going in, in June? Not just, not just students, but, but teachers as well. And it may or may not even reveal anything, but because this, these data are such a snapshot, we know that any individual teacher, any individual student could be going through something at the moment they take this. It's very much affecting them and how they're thinking about their answers to these questions.
Sure, sure. And I do indeed love that question, uh, because I, I, um, it, that's, that's straight out of my dreams for the MCIA project is, uh, using the data more frequently than a once per year snapshot. I think it's powerful, uh, in this, in this way. It can lead to sorts of some of the conversations that we were, uh, touching on earlier. But I think the pre and post method can really unlock like even more potential from this data. So, so one idea that we've talked about in the consortium is, is exactly that pre and post with all of the survey questions so that you can see change over time within a school year. You could imagine that these checkboxes are, uh, 22, 23, fall, 22, 23, spring. Another idea, uh, another option for that is to go to the, uh, the whole list of, measures that we look at, that you can see in this chart. And maybe there's a school that is trying something new. And that particular school just wants targeted information about, um, cultural responsiveness in curriculum or civic participation is another one that comes to mind. And maybe there's sort of like an intervention or a new program that, 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 that is targeting cultural responsiveness or civic participation. And you want to just use those questions? Then that's, that's available to schools. It, it wouldn't be posted on our dashboard, uh, but we can run it for you. And then you can, here's the civic participation questions. And, um, and then it might provide, you know, useful kind of like, uh, formative, uh, feedback, uh, around a specific project.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other members with questions for Peter? I don't see any at this time, Peter, but I'm sure I see lots of brains working and thinking about all the information that you've presented today. I appreciate you sharing your contact information. I'd also encourage school committee members to reach out to Dr. Ellen Emma, who's really been very close to this work since the beginning. If you would like to take a deeper dive into any of this or understand it, I'd also encourage you to take some time to just go and explore the dashboard. Um, until you really have an opportunity to sort of dive deeply into it. And think about the, um, questions and ideas that are there. It, um, it really takes some time to get your head around it. Peter, uh, referred to his organization as a little startup. And, um, while I appreciate him being modest, I'd also like to let the committee know that MCIA has been supported by the state legislature, um, for quite some time now in their budget. Senator Pat Jalen's been a huge supporter of this project. And they managed to get a, just a little educational grant, uh, about a year ago that is supporting some of this dashboard work. So I think that it's, um, it's exciting, it's an exciting time for MCIA. And I think that it has really helped challenge our, um, our district to think differently about, um, how we define success for students and about, um, thinking about the teacher and teacher and student experiences in schools being as much a part of success as, um, as ranking number one in the Boston Globe. So, um, I really, really appreciate you being here with us today and, um, look forward to hearing more from you over time because this is clearly a powerful tool. I, I hear Dr. Hackett beginning to dig into some ideas too, as we move, move towards strategic visioning for the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Madame Chair. It was really great to be a part of the conversation, uh, and I appreciate the invite. Uh, and you know, uh, as, as I mentioned, feel free to reach out anytime.
Thanks very much. And with that, um, Dr. Hackett, if you could move Peter, allow Peter to get on with his evening. And we
Peter can just hit leave.
Yeah.
He's in full control of his evening now.
After all this time.
You have my permission, Peter.
I mean, you are welcome to stay with us through the school committee meeting. I'm not going to kick you out of the room.
You all are great.
Other work to do.
I got, I have bedtime happening upstairs that I'm going to go join. So nothing personal for you all, from you all, but, but thanks for the opportunity. I'm still bad at Zoom, but I think I found it.
And with that, I'm going to move the school committee on to policy FH. This is our second read of this policy, the use of the athletic field lights at Milton Stadium on Manchester Field. We do expect a vote to be taken on this item this evening. As, as our committees practice, typically when new policies come to us, either through our own process or through a more extended process, we typically have a first read and an opportunity to see the policy and think about the details in it. And allow for public comment, both at the first and the second read on our policy. And then our second read of a policy is generally when we take a vote on that policy. This policy is an update from 2015 policy that preclude, predated permanent lighting on Manchester Field. And this new version seeks to maximize student athletic use of the field as well as make the field available as appropriate for youth rental possibilities. And as, as was stated earlier this week, sorry, this week, earlier tonight, the priority in the field management document for rental use of that field begins with our, our own high school team having, teams having priority, youth sports within Winchester having priority. And only after that is the field looking to be rented to out, any outside group. Currently, the use of the field is limited to the 8:30 shut off time and seasonal restrictions. The field management committee, as per our policy, brought this, this item up. And they seek to potentially generate some revenue to contribute to the maintenance and sustainability of the turf field and related items such as netting and fencing that help to create a better environment for use and residence. The primary use of the field continues to be Winchester Public Schools and youth sports. And these policy change recommendations come to the school committee per our policy outlined in policy FH, following the field management committee meetings, which had a public hearing and a separate meeting on their part for a vote. Following our discussion and potential vote tonight, this policy would then move on to the select board. It is a policy that we share with the select board and the field management committee. So they would be taking a vote after us. Their anticipated vote on this would be August 15th. The chair has informed me and that would be an evening meeting at town hall. I am happy to open up the discussion to the committee. If anybody has something that they would like to comment on, please raise your digital hand and we can address the issues. Yes, Ms. Bollinaze.
Um, I saw that Mr. Kacholfi was in our audience. And I was just wondering if he could summarize from the field management committee, the, some of the main points of the memo that was sent to us? Just on their recommendations? Because some of those answers, some of the questions that have come up in public comment and in some of the letters that we have received.
Absolutely. Dr. Hackett, could you please elevate Mr. Kacholfi?
I've done so.
And I would also mention that Mr. Nixon, priorly held by Mr. Brady, have been school committee members that have been members of the field management committee. So they may have some things to add as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Nick.
So yes, I can go over the, the recommendations that were attached to the edits of the light policy. One of the, the first is recommendations that we wanted both the school board and the select board to prioritize and think about as the, the policy goes through it and, and work towards helping the neighbors with some of their suggestions. So the first would be to work with the police department to actively, actively enforce parking and noise rules on Manchester Field in the abiding neighborhoods, as you heard some of the neighbors talk about in public comment tonight. We've already started that process and the chief of police said he'd be at our next field management committee meeting as well. And I know that that is, is in the works and we started that process. Number two is to prioritize improvements that Manchester Field that encourages users to organize activities on the north end, which is the parking lot end of the field. So one of the things that we are doing is, is going to try to ensure that the installation of the exact same netting that's on the south end, which is 30 foot of netting that protects the neighborhood is identical on the other side of the, the field. And that's something that we, we feel is, is very important. Because many of the practices or most of the informal users will, will congregate in that area. We have less kind of leeway or less oversight of the informal users that are non-permitted dropping in play. And if we can have that netting on the other side, it, we feel it'd encourage people to play on that side a little bit more and, and not affect the neighborhood quite as much. They also suggested that we add some runner, sauna rain shelters. So there's some, some shelter from the, the sun on that north end. Again, the south end has a little bit more tree cover and it's a little bit more shady, which, which attracts, you know, teams during the hot weather to play on that, that end of the field. So, so adding something like what they, we did over at the Manchester basketball courts would be a priority. As well as we are investigating whether the lights can be turned on only half field for when teams only need to use half the fields at night. So they, they asked us to prioritize that because with some of this stuff is, is going to be an investment additionally to what we already have invested in the field. So they want the, the town to, to look at that and, and the select board and, and school board to advocate for those things. And the last thing that we asked the school committee, select board to do is to support the neighborhood stalled application for looking at a resident only parking in some areas down there where there's a lot of parking issues. As you heard, every, a butter talked about parking issues and we, we hear them loud and clear. And I've been down there a bunch of times and it is an issue. People are parking in, in the do not park areas and it's something that we, we feel needs to be addressed. And there's a multitude of ways that, that, that that could happen. Additionally, the field committee heard some, some of their suggestions and we are going to be in the process of, of creating additional signage for Manchester Fields for all the gates and all the, the fencing in the area that summarizes parking is the park, what, where to park, other neighborhood obligations as well as policies that, that need to be stated on the field. We're in the process of putting that together. The, the field will be under a renovation this fall. So those signage's will probably be up at the, during the renovation, after renovation. Additionally, we are the use of turf fields in the winter, use in the fields when any snow, shutting down any rentals during snow and no snow clearing will be discussed at our next field management committee and probably be in a
Whoops. We'll wait just a minute. I think Mr. Kacholfi froze there for a minute. I think he's on I, items A and B under item two in the additional recommendations. So he's also speaking about the additional charge for groups that are not informing light schedulers. They are using or not done using the field. So that would be a penalty for, a financial penalty, penalty for groups that are not following the rules and regulations as set out by the field policy document. Included in your packets, both in the prior week and this week is the field policy document. If you were not able to take a look at that, is Nick back with us, Dr. Hackett, or did he?
He is not yet. I've got my eye on the attendees to see if he pops back in. He may need to turn his video off. Sometimes that can be an issue with freezing out.
I believe that there were, there might be some questions that members have for Mr. Kacholfi. So I'm hoping he can join us again. But Mr. Brady, did you have a question for Nick or did you have a comment just for the? Let's see.
I just had a comment. I, I think the field committee has been working on this since last fall. I, I knew that was the first meeting I attended and that's something they've been working on for a long time. I know they had wanted to discuss it with us over the course of the winter and we never really got around to it. We're getting around to it now. I do hear a lot of concerns from the neighbors. Some of it has to do with this extended lighting, but some of it just seems to have to do with in general, there seem to be a lot of issues in the area. So I'm appreciative that the police department is able and willing with everything else they have to do to try and collaborate with the neighbors and, and with the field committee. I think that definitely is something that needs to happen. Particularly concerning about people parking and blocking emergency vehicles and just creating safety hazards for everyone in the neighborhood. And again, the, the neighbors, I think, have a number of legitimate concerns. So I, I definitely feel like we, we need to look at this policy and revise this policy. But I'm also wondering, giving some, given some of the neighbors' concerns, can we wait a little bit? What is the rush per se, given how long this has been the way it is? But that's, that's just my current thinking on the matter.
So I would add, Mr. Brady, that Mr. Kacholfi has also come to policy subcommittee this spring. And he brought the field management document to us prior to these two meetings. So I do think that it has been a process over time. I'm not sure. I know that sometimes it can feel rushed to, to many people when the vote arrives. But the, the process is outlined in our policy.
Sure. Just the average person in Winchester is not paying any attention to policy subcommittee. Disrespect to our policy subcommittee, but that's not really anything that
I just wanted to make sure that people knew that this wasn't the first two times the committee was seeing it. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had several thoughts. First of all, I want to acknowledge Mr. Call, who led off public comment tonight. His list of concerns are, are really understandable. They're well presented. He did speak to the field management committee and articulated them very well. He spoke to concerns about parking, noise, trash. I would actually add traffic to that. The Phillips has spoke to that before. I, I sort of think of traffic and parking as two different issues. I was, I was shared with the committee and with those in the public watching. And I was a little surprised and disappointed to see yellow school buses back there in the neighborhood. And so I will share, I, I had a follow-up conversation with Mark Aria, who's our athletic director. I want the community to know that each year, and maybe even at the beginning of each season, I wouldn't be surprised. Mr. Aria does reach out to his peers and communicate where our visiting team should be traveling to, where they should be parking. And we expect the rules to be followed. We of course can't control what a driver does behind the wheel of a yellow school bus. But in addition to that list that Nick was just going through about, you know, no parking signs and enforcing that, I actually wondered if maybe it's a conversation for the select board about no buses or something to that effect. Because they're really not supposed to be back there. And I wondered if, you know, because our directors of finance in each district have a, let's say, line of contact with the owners of bus companies, if that might be a message that Mr. Rowe or Dr. Hackett could communicate to other districts? Because, you know, many of us have very, have varied work schedules. It's got to be incredibly frustrating if you've got to pull out of your driveway at three or four in the afternoon to go to work or to pick up a child in an elementary school and you can't do it because there's a bus blocking your path. I'd be very frustrated by that. And so I, I wonder, Dr. Hackett, if there is an opportunity to just kind of step up the communication a little bit. I know, by the way, Mr. Aria is doing this, but I think there, that's one example of something we may be able to do at the district level.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I don't think, certainly no question that we can do that. I also was just, has I been thinking this through? A lot of our surrounding communities use the same bus company. So we would also have the opportunity to reach out directly to the bus company and say, here's an issue that we're facing Winchester. We just need your drivers to be aware of it. And here's how we ask you to, to come into, into that facility and to stay out of the neighborhoods. I, I can't imagine this situation. I mean, I've been here a year now, so I kind of know my way around Winchester. But I could tell you that if you, if you're coming into Winchester cold and you've got 45 kids behind you in a great big yellow bus, you know, it, it can be difficult to, to kind of navigate through because it is so tight. You know, in the downtown, while beautiful is also, it's, it could get congested, congested pretty quickly, especially around the same time that, that buses are trying to come and deliver kids for, for an event. So, but there's no question about it that we, we will make it, can make and will make a, an effort to try to make some more connections. And to your point, Mr. Aria does a good job with that. But we could, we can also bring that to a district level.
Thank you for that. And then in Ms. Bergstrom.
Mr. Nixon, I want to follow up on that real quick before you move on. Dr. Hackett, I know in the era of, of, of app-based directional maps as well, that in other areas and other municipalities, they've had some issues with people putting an address in their, in their Google map or their ways. And they, when they don't know particularly where they're going. And I have to wonder if the bus company is being directed through some kind of mapping software towards that end of the field versus our middle school. And perhaps as part of our communication, we can make sure that that's not happening as well.
You can certainly suggest that. I thought you were going a whole different place with that. I was going to say, oh my goodness. So, because we're talking about, because we've been talking about an app that we can see where the buses are at all, at all times. So I'm glad you didn't go there with that.
Not today. Just making sure that they're not being directed to, to Manchester Road or Coddington Road by, by some kind of mapping software.
We, we will ask that question. That's a great point.
And then Ms. Bergstrom, might I be able to share screen for a moment? I just, I had an image that I thought the committee might find interesting. Let me just see if I, so I, I love that we still have this website up, McCall Expansion Project. So one of the things we did at the lower level, and this is as much as I can zoom it in. But we actually went from two public bathrooms to 10. And conveniently, this is at the north end of the field where I know the neighborhood would like activity to be. So while we have dedicated bathrooms for some of the team rooms for expanded athletics and sports, the intention certainly when we designed this was that these public restrooms would be available to the public. So I was disappointed to hear from Mr. Phillips, there's, there's concern with public urination. I don't know how, if that's a present day problem or more in the past. But certainly this was intended to address things like that. Maybe this is an operational issue, Dr. Hackett, we could speak with, you know, our facilities department. Just be sure that these bathrooms are, are open and available. I know Nick is back with us and I, this is a weedy question to throw to you, Nick. But I'm not sure if these bathrooms are unlocked and available. That was certainly the expectation when we went into design. And especially if this is a problem today, then that should be something we should go back and revisit. So I just wanted the Phillips to know, I, I heard that loud and clear. I'm surprised and disappointed at that. But we did make an effort to, you know, provide more facilities there on the field. Does Nick know, are those, are those bathroom facilities open? So if, if a private group, you know, is renting the field, do they have access to the toilets?
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Yeah, the, the bathrooms are available if, if renters request access to the bathrooms. But we do have porta potties on site from the beginning of the spring, which is middle of March, all the way till December 1. So the porta potties were, are on site and that's something that we've extended and, and made an investment in. It wasn't always there all the time when I first started. So I think there was some issues, especially during the pandemic where we weren't supposed to have any activities on the field in the very beginning. And so we weren't encouraging use of the fields and courts. There wasn't, I think there was an issue during those times, but I think we've rectified that. But if, if it's, if it's not quite rectified, we will continue to invest and maybe add some more in that area.
Okay. And you know, and, and/or maybe we need to have a conversation about keeping those bathrooms open. And then, you know, there's a corresponding custodial or janitorial charge for that. Somebody's got to be responsible. Somebody's got to be responsible for keeping them clean and locking them up. But just wanted to reiterate, th- th- this is one of the reasons why we felt it was important to add those facilities down there at that level to support the activities on the field and not just for the Woburn Winchester football game every other, you know, Thanksgiving. Um, so two other comments, I'll try to be quick, Ms. Bergstrom. So, uh, Nick spoke to, you know, lighting controls, the potential to maybe have lights on at one end of the field, not the other. When we last, when we first developed this policy back around twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, there was some discussion around this idea of having like a lower light level for practices and a full light level, for instance, for MIAA games. Not really a safety issue, but one needs full lighting, let's say, for officiating, right? One needs to see the play, the ball, the sideline, et cetera. Um, and this is something that did come up at a recent field management committee meeting. And I understand that, you know, Nick is looking in to see what, what can be sort of done along the lines of lighting control. But I think it's too weedy of an issue to sort of be ingrained in school committee policy that, that it's a great example of what I think Nick can do as a rec director. If the technology is there and/or if it's not there today, if controls can be upgraded so that, um, Nick and his team can sort of tailor the lighting, uh, to minimize the impact on the neighbors, that would just, uh, be common sense. Um, and I would support that. And then I guess my, my last comment would just be, you know, I do have an expectation. I appreciate Nick's memo that sort of is encouraging the select board and the school committee to work with the police department and others. I would just be very respectful of the lanes that we all sort of travel in. There, th- th- the school committee and by association, the school department has pretty limited authority on some of these issues when we're talking about literally stepping a foot off of the McCall campus. Um, the police chief will always answer a call from Dr. Hackett. But, um, I feel like, you know, concerns around, you know, signage for no parking. I'm serious in saying maybe we should put up a sign that says no buses. Um, that flows through, you know, town hall. Um, parking enforcement, uh, trash, um, you know, inappropriate behavior off, off campuses, I'm sure will be conversations that will include the superintendent. Um, but the authority really is sort of outside this group. And so my suggestion at the field management committee and the chair, Mr. Mucci, was there and agreed was that I think these issues really need to go to the select board and they should have a conversation with the town manager and try to delineate what, if anything, warrants some policy discussion among the board and what really just falls into the realm of operations. And, and the first in my mind would be parking enforcement. I mean, if there's no parking and somebody's parking there, th- th- there's a way to address that. So, uh, I certainly, I've, I've heard the neighbors' concerns and I appreciate how they've articulated them. And, um, my impression from Mr. Mucci was that he welcomed that opportunity to have that conversation at the table. So.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. Um, I'd just like to follow up on a few ideas of Mr. Nixon's. I, I wondered about the bathrooms myself because, um, in our last meeting, we talked about, um, just what Mr. Nixon is, is discussing right now, that there are some lanes of operations that fall more under the control of the select board and the school committee. And hearing the concerns of the neighbors, um, you know, I wonder what operational things that we as a school committee can do and as a school department to sort of, um, be good partners with the select board and good neighbors to the town. Um, having those bathrooms open and accessible is certainly one of them. When I heard, um, that they were renting porta-potties, um, uh, my mind jumped to the same place, Mr. Nixon, is that we invested quite a bit of thought and planning into McCall to make sure that we would have those open and accessible. So I certainly think that's something we can work, um, with field management committee and scheduling to make sure, um, is available to keep people out of people's yards to do that because that is not pleasant or, um, acceptable for any of our students or community members or families. Um, the other thing I wonder about, Dr. Hackett, is, um, the McCall parking lot. So, um, I think that it's completely appropriate for, and I've heard Nick also support, um, better parking signage and controls in the Manchester and Coddington Street neighborhood. Um, I wonder if there is something that we can do, um, to work with Nick as part of that field management document to even indicate that, um, anybody renting the field or using the field after eight PM be at, actually directed to the McCall School Parking Lot. In our last meeting, we talked about some kind of interactive mapping on our district website that we could provide to students and families and out-of-town, um, team participants that showed no parking in that neighborhood area in a visual way. And even, um, is there any signage that we can put up to encourage resident parking in the McCall lot?
Short answer is yes. I mean, signage is a pretty, uh, pretty easy thing to do. Uh, we can work with Nick certainly and, uh, P with the BW. Uh, we can map out, uh, what we think makes sense and, and just along the line of signage too. I'm not sure, been the field several times, but I'm not sure what the signage looks like, looks like to the actual restrooms that we were referring to in the building, whether that is clear. If you're at the south end of the building that you, that there are restrooms at the north end of the building, we might want to think about some of those kinds of, uh, s- s- that signage too along the field to try to help pedestrian and, 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 uh, and participant in even audience traffic, um, walking traffic as well. So, I mean, I, that, that's a, that's a, that is a easy, easy, relatively easy thing to do and I, and I think it would be very helpful. So, um, you know, we can have that conversation certainly.
Because I think anything we can do, direct people who are using the field in the evening, you know, after the schools are off of it and the schools are, school days over, to that parking lot may address some of the neighbors' concerns of noise in that neighborhood late at night too, because if we're directing people to that end of the field.
Right.
Then it will be, um, it will be next to McCall. It will be next to the school building instead of walking through their neighborhoods. So, um, if we could work through that, um, with the field management committee and the select board, I think that would be great too. My other question for Nick is, um, the ten PM shut-off time. And I'm wondering if, um, that time is, um, was given, was recommended as the ideal time? I'm wondering, um, about the ability to rent that space if we began dimming lights at that field at nine thirty. Can you weigh in a little bit, um, Mr. Kacholfi, about, um, about the, the ten o'clock versus, say, a nine thirty shut-off time?
Sure. Um, so I can't speak for the entire field management committee. I can speak from what it, what it looks like as the rec director. Um, because the, the field management committee had some concerns about the, the lights turning off, uh, directly at nine thirty because there's times where there's spillage of the, if you look at the, the Nolton Stadium, um, schedule, you know, whether it's the fall or the spring, there's times where Mr. Aria, um, the AD has games until eight or eight thirty. Um, so that would limit the amount of rentals. So there, there, there needs to be, sometimes, you know, a game will go into overtime and it'll end at eight, eight thirty and the, the group has it for an hour and fifteen or whatever. So it spills over to eight, eight, past eight thirty, uh, nine thirty, excuse me. Um, so our, 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 the original plan was for them to dim at, uh, nine forty-five. However, you know, talking to some of the youth groups, as, as Mr. Gill had mentioned earlier in public comment, it's groups that are going to be heavily using the field, like lacrosse. Um, they, they will typically end before nine, nine thirty. So if there was a, an adjustment to be made by the, the select board or the school committee or even a recommendation, um, that, that, that's looked at by the select board from the school committee or however that, that is, that is worded, I don't think it would be the end of the world. I think that it is, as long as we can still get those two hours of, of use at the end of the day, for the most part, when Mr. Aria's off at seven thirty and there's that two-hour block, it gets difficult when it's like a, a forty-five-minute block. No one's ever going to use that. So I, I wouldn't dip below the nine thirty. Um, but if it is a nine thirty and that's something that, that the school committee and select board strongly think is, is a, a good time to agree upon, I, I think that, that would work for, as far as what I see in scheduling the field.
Because I think that creep is exactly what some of the neighbors probably are concerned about with the ten o'clock shut-off time is that if we, if we do have it as late as ten, are we going to creep to ten fifteen? Um, and I think if we, um, could commit to the lights dimming at nine thirty, um, at nothing and saying nothing past ten PM, I think we might be able to allay some concerns.
I wouldn't be opposed to that, being, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, compromise. I think that, that wouldn't, like I said, that, that wouldn't make a huge deal in the grand scheme of things.
Ms. Bollanase.
Could you just clarify? Are you saying that the lights would begin to dim at nine thirty with the plan to be off at nine forty-five? Or are you saying that lights are beginning to dim at nine fifteen to be off by nine thirty? I just, I wasn't sure what you were getting at or if that's what you meant, Ms. Bergstrom, Mr. Kacholfi, or?
Uh, my understanding from, uh, Ms. Bergstrom is that they would dim starting at nine thirty with them being completely off at nine forty-five. If we, i- in my, and that's what I commented on, if we were dimming at nine fifteen, that would, that would be an issue. Uh, you wouldn't, you would get that fifteen-minute time and it would just really kind of, it would, it would mess up the block and that would, you would lose all your rentals there.
It was the prior, Mr. Kacholfi, the dimming at nine thirty. Um, and I just, Ms. Bollanase, did you have another question?
Oh, I was just going to comment, um, with respect to the signage, um, towards the bathrooms. Uh, when I, on the occasions, I've been there for different sports, um, different youth sports. Um, I guess I, I have seen people going towards the bathrooms at the back of McCall and the, and the bathrooms do seem to be open. Um, I don't know that there's necessarily a lot of signage that points people towards those bathrooms. So I don't know if you didn't know about the bathrooms that you would necessarily go to them. So I think that is a good idea to have some signage in good loca- in strategic targeted locations that just say, hey, there are these bathrooms at the back of the McCall Building and here they are. And maybe something big on the restrooms themselves.
Are there any other questions from, sorry, I'm a little hoarse. Any other questions from committee members?
Ms. Bergstrom, just for the benefit of the committee, if you could share screen again and pull up the proposed draft policy, I think it's paragraph six that speaks to the timing of the lights. As currently written, seasons and request deadlines are defined, uh, by, and by the Town of Winchester Field Permit Policy Document. That's actually a separate standalone document. Um, I think Nick, Nick spoke to at our prior meeting. That's not a part of this policy. That really gets into more of the operational weeds. Lights are permitted for all seasons as proposed, seven days a week with an off time of no later than ten PM. Lights dim fifteen minutes before the ten PM off time. So the conversation we were just having, um, considered, uh, an off time no later than nine forty-five, then lights would begin dimming at nine thirty.
Correct. And just, um, for a quick summary, the other things that we have discussed as recommendations would be, um, to recommend, um, that we shift parking via signage and, uh, communications on our website with the select board and the town to the McCall Parking Lot, um, to support, um, the select board and the town into making residence-only parking, um, after eight thirty on Manchester and, and Coddington Road. Um, and, um, the one recommendation that, um, we had in that from Mr. Kacholfi from the field management committee was about limiting the use of the fields, particularly in January and February in the winter months. And I'm, I assume that we have, um, consensus from the committee that that's a recommendation that we, um, would like them, the field management committee, to address in the, in the field management document, being that it's come from them and seems to be a concern of the neighbors. So that's, that is what I have so far. If I've missed anything, please let me know.
Well, and again, Dr. Hackett indicated, you know, his willingness to kind of step up communication to, uh, districts and bus companies about appropriate places to park. Again, kind of operational stuff, but it's, it's important, um, requires some ongoing attention.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. I missed that one.
You know, I, I, if I can, um, grab a couple, a couple more minutes. Um, having been on the committee, I think I was either chair or vice chair at the time when this policy was first created. Um, we had some joint meetings with the select board. Um, in, in this instance, that's not happening, I think, just due to some scheduling issues and availability. So it feels a little bit clunky. Um, but I know with Mr. Mucci, you know, in attendance at field management, I, I presume he's keeping his board well informed. The intention is if, if we were to approve a policy tonight, it advances for the select board for discussion, um, in an up or down vote. Um, if, if you would welcome a motion to amend, I'm happy to make a motion to amend the policy as presented, um, to pull back on, um, the lighting time so that it would read, lights are permitted for all seasons, seven days a week with an off time no later than nine forty-five PM. Lights dim fifteen minutes before the nine forty-five PM off time. And I think that's the only, only place in the policy where any amendment would need to be ma- made, given how Nick has kind of simplified this.
Correct. And that's why I was trying to gather the rest of our recommendations because I would also then, on behalf of the committee, if the committee were willing, present a memo to the select board with our recommendations around, um, parking and locker rooms and the bus company, um, and some indications of, um, some additional actions that the school committee, um, would hope to take to, um, be better neighborhood partners. So if there are, um, any other suggestions for that, I would, I'm happy to hear them. Otherwise, um, I'm not sure if you actually made a motion, Mr. Nixon, or?
I did. You can, yeah, I mean, you can, I, I feel the, the other items, they're very important, but I think they sort of fall outside, you know, the.
The policy.
The policy. That's right. So I'm, I'm making that motion to pull back the lighting time by fifteen minutes in the policy and agree with the long list of items you, you just went through that need continued discussion and, uh, some solutions.
Second.
Um, I'll take a roll call vote on the amendment. Um, Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bollanase.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the motion on the amendment passes. Um, I just asked Dr. Hackett, Mr. Nixon mentioned sort of the clunkiness. If you could pull the policy up for me again, Mr. Hackett, so I can make sure the committee knows what the procedure of this particular policy is. It's a little unique. And as Mix, Mr. Nixon stated, originally developed with the neighbors, so, um.
Let me see if I can find a clean version real quick, okay?
Yeah. Yep. Typically, we follow our own practice for policy, but in fact, the, um, changes to this policy are actually dictated by policy. While you look, I think I know it off the top of my head, Dr. Hackett, so I will try to describe it. Um, initially, when changes are made to policy FH, um, it has to, the suggestion to change a policy has to come by a vote of the field management committee. The field management committee, um, then, uh, could you go down a little bit? And I'll make sure I'm reading it correctly. A little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. Thirteen, to make changes to this policy, the field management committee must initially approve a review of the policy by majority vote. Um, that, um, as Mr. Brady stated, has happened some time ago, following. Are you killing me here, Dr. Hackett?
No, you know what? You're making me nervous, okay? So I got my tongue out trying to do this and, whoops, that's not that. All right, hold on.
You had it right up.
I, I think it was when you got called Mr. Hackett that threw you off.
You know what? It really did. It was disrespectful and I'm not quite over it. Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thirteen, please. Thank you. Following this approval, the committee will allow discussion one meeting prior, um, to voting its final decision, including full one public hearing, which field management committee has done. Um, they were asked to use reasonable effort to invite abouters and neighbors, which I believe, um, they also believe that they did, and other interested parties to the meeting. The affirmative vote is then forwarded to the school committee, um, for discussion at their next two meetings, um, which we have done, and then the Board of Selectmen for approval at their next meeting. So, um, I do agree with you, Mr. Nixon, that there is some clunkiness to, um, this policy. And, um, it does, it would have been much smoother with a, a joint meeting with the select board. But, um, per policy, this is the procedure that we're following in this case, so, um.
And so having said that, if you, I'm doing this totally on the fly and it is kind of clunky, I'm, I'm, would then be pleased to make a motion that the school committee approve that recognizing we are one of two parties with the select board for a joint policy for lighting on Manchester Field, that the school committee approve the policy FH as revised and forward it through the chair and the superintendent for, to the select board for their discussion and consideration and adoption.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote on this as well. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinese?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
And chair votes aye and the vote while not unanimous has the, has a quorum of the committees, so the, it does, the motion does carry. And with that, we, I will take the action as suggested. We'll also direct the superintendent to work with the town manager designate to ensure that Manchester Field Use and Operations is directed by the policy. And we'll encourage the select board and the Field Management Committee to work with town officials and the police department to ensure that parking enforcement on Manchester and Cutting Road and that the field access is better managed. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent end of cycle evaluation. Thank you. You were all set with that, Dr. Hackett? I am pulling my information up as well.
I feel a lot of pressure here on this one, so. I don't want this to go badly.
So here we are at the end of our evening and our evening is going to end this evening by sharing our summative assessment of Dr. Hackett. I would like to talk just a little bit about our process. This is a tool that we are given to use as school committees by the Department of Elementary and Special Education, at which we are able to rate our superintendent on their performance goals for the year. Each individual member of this committee was able to do their own individual rankings on these performance goals. And Dr. Hackett also completed a self-assessment using the same tool. As chair, I then brought together all of the input and information from all the members of the committee and developed a final document that is reflective of the overall opinion of the school committee as a whole. At the beginning of this document, we talk about our goals that we developed with Dr. Hackett for not only his interim superintendency at the time, but also our district. Those are in the description areas on, in the center there, there are a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, district improvement goal one and district improvement goal two, which seems to have fallen off this screen. District improvement goal two was about establishing a framework for continuous improvement through thoughtful planned engagement and data and evidence-based programmatic review, development, implementation and evaluation.
Do you think it's important to note that the formatting provided by the Department of Education is very difficult to work with? And that's why sometimes things like that happen, so.
I think Ms. Bollinese would certainly agree. You'll note that on these indicators, the goals that Dr. Hackett and the school committee set were very ambitious goals and certainly not goals that we assumed would be met to their full degree in the first year. And that is reflected in the rubric to the right is that some of these goals, we see some progress and some of these goals, we see significant progress on, but many of these are items that we will be carrying over to the next school year to be able to meet or exceed. Dr. Hackett, if you'd like to move down just a little bit. We also assess Dr. Hackett against standards in instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. In this area, you will see that Dr. Hackett earned three areas of proficiency and one area in management operations that this is exemplary. I'd like to indulge the committee in reading the overall evaluation comments, which reflect all of your feedback that has been gathered into this document. There are, if you have not had an opportunity to look at it, your direct quotes and thoughts are mentioned throughout this document in each comment area. This is the overall summative area. It's with great respect and admiration for Dr. Hackett that this committee respectfully presents the summative evaluation of his first year of work with the Winchester Public Schools. As evidence of the confidence of the committee for Dr. Hackett to do this work, eight months into his tenure as an interim superintendent, a full superintendency contract was extended to him. While his overall rating in this review is proficient, it should be noted that there are many indicators for which school committee members as a whole found his performance to be exemplary. One member even suggested that they wish for a proficient plus category to reflect that given time, they believe Dr. Hackett would obtain exemplary work in those as well. Dr. Hackett came into Winchester schools at a challenging time, like districts across the nation. This district was still processing the effects of the COVID pandemic on students, families, leaders and educators. Winchester has found what it needed in a leader through Dr. Hackett this year. He has been noted by many stakeholders to be a supportive, kind and positive leader who supports others to believe in themselves and allows their talents and leadership to shine as bright as his own. He brings people along with him of journeys of decision-making and recognizes the power in shared problem solving and the ownership of issues. Dr. Hackett recognizes his own growth areas as well and is brave enough to admit when he is wrong. This is not to say that there are storms that Dr. Hackett has had yet, has had and has yet to weather. He continues to strive to meet the challenges of best serving the needs of special education students in the district with consistency and compliance through data-driven evaluation. He recognizes the need for continuous improvement in a collaborative community conversations to ensure that all voices, even those of families whose experiences are not positive, are heard. Programmatic needs are due to be evaluated and improved. Diversity, equity and inclusion practices are integral to the groundwork being laid for a long-term strategic vision. These are broad goals that require more than the year of experience that Dr. Hackett has had with WPS and reflect why the superintendent's performance goals are noted as some and significant progress rather than met or exceeded, and yet he's still received a proficient rating overall. This committee is committed to a goal-setting and strategic planning process that can be accomplished over the next several years instead of just one. To that end, it is the recommendation of the chair that Dr. Hackett's next summative evaluation follow a two-year instead of a one-year cycle as allowed by the Department of Elementary and Special Education. Additionally, while Dr. Hackett provided evidence for self-evaluation for all twenty-one indicators, I would additionally recommend to the committee that they return to the prior practice and MASC guidance to collaboratively select one to three focus indicators for each standard for evaluation that highlight these long-term goals for superintendent and district growth. Throughout this evaluation, you'll find the comments of individual members from their individual ratings. In this way, this evaluation can truly reflect the opinion of the committee as a whole instead of myself as chair. To that end, I'd like to conclude with quotes, quotes from members regarding Dr. Hackett's work this year that reflect members appraisal of his leadership, management, engagement and culture. Dr. Hackett weathered an unusually challenging year without missing a beat. On top of all the challenges brought by COVID and was able to implement a number of improvements to communications and operations that will benefit the district going forward. His goals lay the groundwork for a multi-year process that will see Winchester Public Schools through to the development and implementation of the next strategic plan. I very much look forward to seeing the process unfold through Dr. Hackett's leadership, strategic thinking and collaborative approach. Dr. Hackett was successful in navigating the budget process that led to a strong, positive relationship with the town finance committee and ultimately a budget that was supported by the town meeting with no reductions. Dr. Hackett actively reaches out to community groups and is genuinely interested in engaging key stakeholders in the decision-making processes. From the building project at Lynch, which is engaging the Lynch community, collaborating with WIMPAC on special education, Dr. Hackett definitely finds the right balance of engaging the right stakeholders at the right time to improve projects and decision-making and to allow diverse perspectives to be heard. I believe that individuals have come away from these talks with Dr. Hackett feeling heard, valued and respected, even if complete agreement is not reached. Dr. Hackett is not blind to the strengths and weaknesses of others, including himself, but does a strong job of bringing out the best in many of us. This is a key skill in any strong superintendent of schools. Finally, one committer, committee summed it well. Dr. Hackett is the right leader at the right time for Winchester Public Schools. Thank you, and I'll be happy to take comments and follow-up from committee members.
Will we stop for applause? I, I want to thank you, Ms. Bergstrom, that it's a great summary. The, the, members of the public, you know, really don't appreciate that this process, a lot of work and it's a lot of work for the chair to kind of synthesize the input from committee members. So I think you did a great job. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I have some thoughts on process that I'll save when we're ready to move on to that, if others have comments more sort of specifically directed to, to Dr. Hackett.
I'd like to give Ms. Bollinese and Mr. Brady any opportunity to add anything in that they believe has been missed or any other comments, please just jump in.
I agree with Mr. Nixon that Ms. Bergstrom did a very able job of taking all of our feedback and amalgamating it into one. So thank you very much. And then also just a, a thank you to Dr. Hackett for all of your work over this first full year. Yes, so I think I wrote it all down, so now all my words escape me. But I was just very appreciative throughout that year, working with you closely for your very positive support and help over the course of the year and your guidance and leadership of the district and all of us. So I thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom, can I put Dr. Hackett on the spot? Is there anything in, in the evaluation, you know, that he found particularly helpful, enlightening, surprising, supportive? Choose your.
First of all, thank you. This is one of the, this process is probably one of the most uncomfortable things I go through every year that I serve as superintendent, not just because it's public, but it's also feels a little kind of hyper-focused on, on me, which, you know, generally I like that, but not in this situation. I really appreciate the comments. I appreciate the way this person pulled that together. I know that that was a, quite a quality of research project. I'm picturing her in her living room with papers scattered about, trying to pull things together with maybe even scissors in, in paste. I don't know what that looks like for a former elementary person. But I, I, you know, what I, what I most appreciate about it is that nothing surprised me. And I think that that's, that is the sign that is a, is a committee and is a leadership team and is, is a superintendent that we have, we communicate early and often and that we, I think, I, I've not had a situation where I haven't heard directly from any of you, if you had a concern, whether it be about something that I should do or haven't done or recommendations or thoughts about what, how I could do something better, that, that has been incredibly helpful for me. I have, I, I know what I have to do for work. I, I, I could pretty easily see just not only from the evaluation, but from just my own self-evaluation. When I, when I come to you in September, I believe, with, with a set of goals, I know the kinds of things that I'm going to be including and, you know, and that is because you've been very clear with me. And I also like to think it's because I also am, I'd like to think maybe one of my toughest critics as well, which, so I, I, I really appreciate the time and the effort you put into this. And I really do also, just looking back, think that the, the interview process that you went through and the data collection that you went through back prior to my appointment as superintendent during the interim period, I, I was incredibly helpful for me as well. And I, I kind of seeing this evaluation and how you put it together, it seems that it was incredibly helpful for you too. So once again, I, I do appreciate it and I know this is just a, a snapshot in time and I will continue to work on getting better.
I just want to thank Dr. Hackett. It was, you know, as I think everyone knows, the most challenging school year perhaps ever that people have had to work through. And I, I don't think that can be underestimated how difficult things were for students, staff, families. So being a superintendent this past school year was probably the hardest year that one could have been a superintendent. So I really want to appreciate the leadership that you gave us and then at the same time encourage you for next year. You know, to really start to push forward your vision for the district based on everything you've learned. I have talked to you enough. I know you have very good ideas and you have very powerful things that you think about and would like to do to benefit our students. So I would just encourage you to take that on now. I think you have our support and so I, I would encourage you. I, I think you, you did exactly what you have to do coming in as an interim and the year that it was. You listened, you learned a, a ton. That's very apparent from your, your deep knowledge of our district after one year. So I just encourage you to kind of seize the opportunity now. You know, you, you have our confidence and I think you, you've, you've fostered some great people who have been here. You've really helped them expand what they're doing and then you've brought in some new great people. And we've seen a lot of success with all of that. So I'm, I'm just excited to see what you're going to do going forward. So thank you for all your hard work. On a totally separate side note, I, I certainly appreciate the idea of evaluating you once every two years. But I, I only worry about that because that, that ends us without any kind of written evaluation. I always find that having some kind of written feedback for folks is appreciated. It's hard to go two years without getting any written feedback for anyone. So that's kind of unique to the superintendency, teachers, administrators, there's a way to have written feedback. Even if you're on a two-year cycle with superintendents, the formative is purely talking, which is quite odd. If there were a way to do a written formative, I suppose we could adopt our own. So that's certainly something else that we could talk about because again, there, the forms and such are kind of suggestions rather than things that we absolutely have to use. We can set the cycle and we have a lot of flexibility. So I'd, I'd be comfortable if we have some kind of written feedback that we're able to give. So that's something we can talk about further when the time comes.
And I would just, I'd just jump on that and say, I would appreciate that. I, I would see that, that would be important for me as well. Just in your thinking about how you want to do this process moving forward.
And I think Mr. Nixon also had some thoughts on some process. I'd just like to thank you, Dr. Hackett. Well, Mr. Nixon, after, after we're done here, let's take those up real quickly because I heard a good suggestion from Mr. Brady as well. And I think what I'd like to do is just add that to our future agenda items is to talk about, as we move into talking about goals this fall as well for the district, talking about reviewing the superintendent evaluation cycle and how we'll provide both formative and summative feedback and select indicators for Dr. Hackett moving forward. And I think our workshop may be a good place to tackle some of that as well.
I, I agree with that and I appreciate that, Ms. Bergstrom. I, I, I'm pleased in your summary, you, you did refer back to our typical process. You know, MASC recommends that school committees identify at least one and no more than three indicators within each of the four standards. Historically, that's always been a little bit awkward. I think some, and I, and I, you know, at a later time, I'll probably want to talk to Dr. Hackett about this and get a sense of what some of his peers do in other districts. But I know in some districts, superintendents, you know, feel strongly about the, the indicators with which school committees should be evaluating them. Some school committees, you know, look at those and, and based on either district goals that they have, specific district goals or maybe some superintendent goals, they're going to pick what those indicators should be. I would also just acknowledge, and I think there's twenty-one in all, so, so it really is a tremendous amount of work. If a school committee were to say, we're formally going to use all twenty-one to evaluate the superintendent. And I think that that would not be a good path for us to take. Some of the, some of these indicators speak to things that are frankly, can be very difficult for school committees to evaluate. They deal with some either privileged information or things that are very kind of operational in nature that we just don't have a good feeling of, you know, on a day-by-day basis, even for the chair. And that may be one of the reasons why MASC kind of recommends we limit these. But having said that, I, I, I was very clear to the chair when I, you know, shared my, my own evaluation as well with Dr. Hackett. I actually really appreciate Frank, what you did. I, I appreciated you giving us your assessment using all.
I actually really appreciate Frank what you did. I appreciated you giving us your assessment using all 21. And I actually wonder if that's something we we would want to encourage moving forward, even though there may only be, you know, half the number of indicators we're actually going to use. I appreciated knowing how the superintendent felt he was doing across the board, and I think that that can kind of frame other conversations, you know, a superintendent just may be very candid about something and and a school committee may see a self-evaluation that in an area that frankly catches them off guard. That did not happen in this case, but it was particularly meaningful for me, and I want to recognize this. I typically only, I typically don't use more than three focus indicators when I evaluate a superintendent. I strayed from that this time. I used more. I think there were five or six I did not use. But that, I think, is a testament to the amount of work that Dr. Hackett has done, how carefully he put his evidence development together for us and his communication back to the committee. That's a long way for for me to say I was comfortable using more because I really felt I had the information. So, Dr. Hackett, I thank you for that. I really do. But I totally agree with Ms. Bergstrom. I do think and we have some memos from the prior school committee, you know, with some recommendations, some guidance we could go back to. I think it behooves us to establish a somewhere in this timeline, that discussion with the superintendent. So we know what it is we're focusing on as it pertains to our own summative evaluation. But I welcomed all the detail, Dr. Hackett, and I look forward to seeing it, you know, in the next round. So I I read all of it, and I thank you for all the work. Thank you. Thank you. I will just say, Mr. Nixon, that one of the things that was in my head was something you said back in the fall about the fact of the matter is I get evaluated on all of it. And so I, in most of what, a lot of those indicators get hit. And while you may not know how I'm doing because you can't see it, you would, in many of them, you would definitely know if I wasn't doing a good job in them. And that's kind of the, kind of the other side of the of the of the rubric. So, you know, I took it seriously, and I think it is important for me to do as honest a self-reflection and evaluation as I can for you, because I do recognize the fact that, you know, you're not, you know, you're not seeing the day-to-day. And hopefully you don't have to see the day-to-day because that's kind of my job.
And Dr. Hackett, I think there have been a few things that have happened in because of your transition from interim to superintendent that have been unique to your process as well. Certainly the community stakeholder groups that we had before you were offered the the full superintendency and we have been able to reflect in many ways around your work over the last year, including your self-evaluation. So I just, I really appreciate your candidness and openness to think about about your own work and to allow this committee to talk to other people about that work too. Because it's important for us to be able to hear from all the stakeholder groups and really get a good picture. Like you said, we you know it when you see it. And I think that this evaluation reflects a job well done. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm in favor of moving on if we if you are. I don't want you to think that I'm holding you up.
I was just about to do so.
Thank you.
I believe that I'll take the advice of the committee. Typically, we have a vote to accept the summative evaluation as presented. If someone would like to make a motion.
So moved. Second.
I was gonna say, I heard all of it. I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bollinese.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Our next meeting is not eight, nine, but eight twenty-two at nine AM. That will also be a virtual meeting. We had anticipated agenda items, thinking of an eight-nine meeting, so we will let the committee know there were some time-sensitive items that were coming up between the ninth and the 22nd that we felt it was best to postpone this meeting. Our future meeting date after that will be August 30th. That's the school committee workshop. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Can I just make one quick, one quick request, Ms. Bergstrom? So knowing school handbooks were on that for future agenda, and long ago, we transitioned from paper to doing it online. Would it be out of order if we ask Dr. Hackett to make those drafts available to us online? Apologies if you've already done that, just so. No, I haven't. No, but they will be. I have received them now from all the all the administrators and principals that worked hard to put those together. We're doing kind of an edit through. We're just trying to make sure that. And so I can provide those by Monday, possibly by Friday. At least if if you could do that, members could certainly communicate to you any questions or if there's typos or what have you that we catch so that, you know, we're going to be taking them up officially almost right before the school year starts. It would just be good to give us that chance to review them. And I'll highlight the changes so that you can see what's changed.
Be great.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Brady, thank you, Mr. Nixon. Roll call vote, Ms. Bollinese.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.
Good, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, Peter. Go inside now.